So we'll do the best we can. We'll try to get to everybody. How this is going to work is when it comes time for public comment, the the public comments that have came in via email, I will read those to the council one at a time. Once that's done, then I will leave this room and go out into either the front of the building or the fireside room, depending on where anyone may be and inquire if anybody wishes to make a comment. At that point, they can read their comment or ask their comment or make their comment, I'm sorry, into a microphone, and then we will go from there. So we'll do the best we can to include everyone, to include their comments, and we will move forward as best we can. The first item-
And Bill, I am here. This is Scott Huber.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huber. The first item in front of you today is the declaration of the of an emergency and the ratification of the proclamation. And the, under the charter, section 8.08.060 authorizes me, the city administrator, I'm also your director of emergency services for the city, to declare a local emergency or proclaim one. I did that yesterday. I took those actions based upon the fact that we are seeing unprecedented numbers of people becoming ill. We are seeing an epidemic that we, our medical systems don't know how to deal with. We have been very, by the good grace, we have not seen that play out in Northern California yet, but I think it's just, it hasn't got here yet, is all we haven't seen. So based upon that, the downturns that we've seen in the economy, the potential for our, the medical system to be overloaded, you know, I felt it was necessary for our city to declare us in a state of emergency. The county is currently in a state of emergency, the state is, the United States is, so our sister city in Chico is, so I thought it was appropriate that we also join them. This will enable us to, in the event that things do come here and that we need assistance of the federal government or the state government, we become eligible for that assistance. It also enables us to help our community members who may, business owners, small business owners, who may need some sort of SBA assistance or something to better help them qualify and get those needed funds, if that's the case, should this situation continue to escalate and become worse. So what we're looking for today is, since I made the proclamation yesterday, and I'm allowed to do that, but within, when the council is not in session, and you were not in session yesterday, but after I make that proclamation, within seven days, the council has to ratify that proclamation and make a declaration that they are in agreeance, that we are in a state of emergency. So what we're looking for today is just an agreement from the council and an acknowledgement and resolutions ratifying the proclamation and then declaring a state of emergency for the city of Oroville.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodson wishes to speak?
Actually, I would just like to recommend and move for an adoption of resolution number 8844, a resolution of the city council of the city of Oroville.
Councilmembers, excuse me, we need to listen to public speakers.
Oh, do we have, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My apology. Public speakers.
Do we have public speakers on this item?
Um, we need to check with the phone line and anyone that may be outside. So it does not seem that there's any on the phone. Our city administrator is checking with anyone that may be outside the chambers.
Okay.
Yeah, so while we're waiting on public comment, I thought I'd just make a comment regarding this issue on a kind of a 30,000-foot scale. I think all of us have been paying very close attention to the news and as it comes out, and it seems like hour by hour the situation changes, including a lot of the relief packages that are going to hopefully roll out and are rolling out out of the DC. And I just wanted to say that even myself is drafting a letter to my, my board, and, and when I hit send, as I looked at the news, what I had already drafted was already irrelevant. And so the, the chamber, which I'm the CEO of, once, once I think that we get a settling down of, and knowing for sure where things are at, we're going to do our due diligence to put out information to our business, business community, as far as, as mentioned by Mr. Legrone about the SBA loans and all those different moving pieces that seem to be continually evolving, that are actually a challenge to stay on top of. So once that kind of sorts out, and I'm, I'm very hopeful that will in the next day or two, then, then my organization that I represent, we will begin to disseminate that information. So if people are interested in that, and certainly the Chamber of Commerce, we will be a source for information for our local business community. And, but right now, it's like, we're all, all, all of us are in this together, certainly. So, thank you.
Returning from outside, the, from in front of the building in our lobby, there were no comments that were made from the outside. There was a question regarding the homeless, what would be any plans that we would have with the homeless. At this point, we're still working with any local providers that we have for that. We will assist them in any which way we can. Part of the executive order of the governor, of the governor of, I believe, on the 14th, was that the state was working toward commandeering any vacant and available hot hotels and motels to place the home during the COVID-19 pandemic. Yesterday, the governor's office released or set up a process for the release of $100 million to go toward assisting people that are homeless and living on the street. So those plans are rolling out. They're rolling out on a bigger scale than in the city of Oroville. So those are coming, and I'm sure that they are diligently working on those to get those done as rapidly as possible. Now, if the council does ratify this proclamation, there are several other decisions that need to be made today. They're small decisions, but it's operational decisions. And then instead of me just making those decisions, I'd much rather get a fill of the council. So I'll be handing out a piece of paper. What I'd like to do is, once the council has done that, we'll just take a look at that and then give me some additional direction about how you would like to see this roll out as this thing, or if this thing continues to expand.
After we've finished our agenda items?
After, no, after you finish this one particular item.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment, too, to the public. I've been in close contact with the hospital administrator, and he has assured me that they are ready, they are prepared in case any cases or suspected cases of coronavirus show up in our community. And also that in Butte County, we have zero cases and zero suspected cases. So I would just like to reassure them that, that there is no immediate threat right now. So just be, rest assured that we are prepared in case something happens. Looking for a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number 8844, which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Oroville ratifying the acting director of emergency services proclamation of existence of a local emergency. In addition, the adoption, adopting the resolution number 8845, a resolution of the city council of the city of Oroville proclaiming the existence of a local emergency.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
And Councilmember Draper, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Councilmember Pittman, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
We have a unanimous vote on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have a document that I'll be handing out. I'll make available to anybody that's also in attendance today. I will get to it just as quickly as I can.
Excellent. Jackie, let me, let me do just one thing. This is Scott Huber on the phone. All votes need to be actually by voice vote. I know we have the system that shows how each person voted, but the law requires if you've got anybody that's on the telephone, everything must be done by a voice vote. So can we have each, each person just state their vote, their vote out loud?
Yes. Councilmember Hatley?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman, we need you to vote again.
Pittman, can you unmute your mic? Thank you. So we have seven yeses, zero noes on this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is operationally for input from the council. One of the things that we may be facing as we move forward in this situation is the request or the directive from public health to, for people to stay at home, to not gather, to not, not business as normal. So that being said, the sample directives that have been put out previously, there was one in Alameda, we've had an opportunity to review that. It has a multitude of exceptions. Interestingly enough, what we do isn't included in many of those exceptions. So if that directive is made by public health, then we have to make decisions as an operation, what are we going to do? I think the, since this is something that is coming from public health, which is a branch of the government, we should follow our own rules, not just decide that, you know, well, what we do is so important that we are not going to follow those rules. So we have to decide for ourselves within our organization, what are essential services? I have been, I've talked with every department head, and I've developed a list. That's what you have in front of you, what is considered essential services from those department heads. The finance department, it has two essential services that it believes is essential. One is the payroll technician, the other is the IT manager. I added the IT manager because I believe that's a very important part of this, especially if we're going to have people working from home, our computer system must work. Community development, we are, in order to keep that system working, we need a building inspector that's working, and our public work supervisors need to be available. Our public safety, police officers, firefighters, dispatchers, municipal law, record, and a records clerk is essential for that department to continue running. Administration, I believe that, of course, I'm, I'm indispensable, not only essential, any, I'm sorry, the, I am one of the essential positions, I believe, because somebody has to be here to make decisions as those different things arise. Our finance director is an essential personnel, I believe, our community development director, and our assistant community development director. Now, on the form you have in front of you, it has another column that says work from home. There are some that can work from home. Our payroll technician can. The ones that say yes and no mean that, yes, you can do some work from home, but no, you can't do it at other times. Like, the IT manager would be a good example of that. Software can be, you know, they can come in, they can fix that remotely. If something goes down with the hardware, they have to physically be here to do it, so they would have to come in to do it. So that would be a yes, an example of a yes and a no. Our police fire, MLEs, records, things like that, they have to be physically present. They have to be here. There's no way to get around that. They cannot service the community from home. I can do my job both here and at home. So, and I believe so can the other directors. So what we need to do is look at that list and ask you, does this meet what you would believe are essential services of the city? Would you recommend anything else being put on there or anything removed from that list? This is my recommended list.
Bill, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that the records clerk falls under public safety.
Yes.
My question is, is in regards to our assistant city clerk. And I don't see that position on here, so could you-
That would be a position that, it is an important role, and it's, it's filled, and it's appreciative of that, but it isn't something that I would have to have here every single day. What I'm looking at is, what are the base number of people that I need to keep the city moving in every facet to best support the community? And this is one that we would probably, we would periodically use, but it wouldn't be somebody that would have to be here under the guise of essential services. Because our, the intent would be is that we would taper down the services that we are delivering to the community with those that are just essential.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Councilmember Hatley?
Thank you, Mayor. What about the other employees? Are we, are they going to continue to work their normal day? Or, and if not, how are, how are we going to compensate them? I mean, how are they going to get-
How this would work out is that we would have everybody that could do work from home do work from home. If there isn't the ability to do work from home, then what we would do is we would send them home, everybody except for who is on this list. And, you know, we wouldn't have all the police here on one day, or all the firefighters, just whoever the shift is. We would have those folks here, they would be working. The other folks, their, their workplace then would be at home. I mean, and if we can do some telecommuting or things like that, we would have them work from there. If there is no way to do that, then they will be at home and we will compensate them. We will pay them.
I was just curious, like, what I was talking about was like, street department or sewer parks or whatever.
They, we would keep them in a situation where we'd have them on a standby situation, because even during these types of situations, we could have an issue where, I'm just going to grab a sewer line plugs up, and we need five or six, you know, crew members out there to deal with that situation. So they would be required to be available on standby, but their workplace would be their home, because they are available to work, they want to work. We're just saying that because if a recommendation comes or a directive from public health not to, then we're saying that, hey, we, you know, it's not in our best interest right now, or your best interest for you to be doing this. So we will be paying them just like they were working, on a standby mode.
Okay. Well, that's, I was just trying to figure out what we were, because it wasn't addressed on this that I could see. So I just want to make sure that-
Yes, sir.
We didn't have people out here, you know, our other crew just working, and, and it would appear that, oh, we were taking care of, we're the top. I didn't want that-
Right. No, no, every, you know, you know, we do not have the ability to pick and choose who gets paid. I mean, we can't say, you know, our labor agreements do not allow us just to selectively lay off people. Really, you know, this is, the folks that are listed on here, they're going to continue to work. I mean, now their work life's going to be a little different. They're going to do things a little differently, but they're going to continue to work during this situation. Others are going to be standing by, waiting, honestly, to come back to work just as soon as we get the direction that we can do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
And so do we have a work at home policy? For an example, I'm, when I'm on the clock and I'm at home, I'm covered by workman's comp. So I'm at home, and I decide to go mow the lawn and hurt myself. Technically, we're, we're on the hook, the city is. So do we have a policy that would give direction to the employees?
I do not believe we'd be on the hook if you decided to do something like that. That's not a regular job activity, and you were outside of it. Then, if anything, you might be on the hook for some discipline, because you were outside, and, you know, you told me you were working, and you're actually doing that. So, no, we do not have a work from home policy, because it's something we normally don't do. We typically need our employees here regularly scheduled times and not from home. So we do not have that. And any injuries that do come about from that are going to be carefully looked at and reviewed to see if that is an activity that was involved in your employment.
Okay. Yeah, just, just good advice to any, any employer that is practicing this, that there is a responsibility when an employee is working from home, that they are covered under workman's comp. So it's good, if you don't have a policy, probably would be a good idea to get one.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hatley?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This is, I, I haven't heard our attorney, Mr. Huber, weigh in on this at all. Is there any liability concerns that we should, that we haven't thought about, or that we should look into, or something that we should implement prior, prior to doing this? Mr. Huber?
No, I, Councilmember Hatley, I think there are, I don't think there are any additional concerns, other than what you would normally expect at a typical workplace. I, you know, there, there may be some unique items that will come up that we'll have to deal with, you know, on the spot as they, as they come up, but, but we're trying to keep essentially the, the functions of government operating as best we can, and also comply with the intent of the national and the statewide orders, which are to, you know, to, for people to sort of sequester themselves and, and, you know, to not spread, you know, any potential contagions around. Working from home is, it is not something that is, for most public agencies, I'll call it, it's not something that happens on a daily basis, but we're finding that in, you know, in these times, we've got to adapt. This is nothing that isn't done in most industries on a regular basis, and, and all of the workers' comp laws and all of the, you know, all of the cases that have come down related to that would certainly apply in these instances. There are good protections in place for employees and for the city as well. So I don't have any, I don't have any concerns related to this that, that, that have not, you know, have not been resolved.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, Mr. Legrone, are you looking for direction to adapt to this modified schedule?
I believe I, I have that direction. And I just want to be really clear with everybody. We, we are not going to this as soon as we walk out of this room or anything else. We have not received this direction from our local public health department. We will not do anything until we hear something from public health that pushes us in that direction. The, also for the council's information, the duration of this is going to be unknown. A question was asked yesterday of how long that this would go on. The answer was, I don't know. I mean, so that was from the local public health department. You know, if something were like this, they're trying, you know, you're asking them to predict the future, and they just can't. So I don't know what the duration of this is going to be. The hours of operation are listed below that. If we receive this order, the intent would be to close our lobby to the public, with the exception of Monday through Friday, we'd be open from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Staffing would consist of myself and senior management. We would be up there. You know, it's probably going to be the best time to get something done. So I would recommend come down and see us.
Bill, can I add that the county's already closed their counter, Chico's completely closed, you have to call by appointment. I understand Feather River may be called, closed, excuse me, and Chico PD's closed their lobby already.
Vice Mayor Thompson's in the queue. One second. Councilmember Hatley? For the public's sake, where is a good spot for them to get information, not just regarding our city, but I'm getting a bunch of calls and regarding people hearing the city's going to martial law and all that. Just for the sake of on this topic, where is a good spot for people to get actual facts and data and not just listen to rumors?
The best place to get information about what's actually going on is Butte County Public Health. I mean, they have a very robust webpage. You can go on there, there's, it takes you to presidential proclamations, it takes you to governor, executive orders, any kind in general. We're not declaring martial law. I mean, that, I don't even know where that would come from, but-
Right.
But, no, I, I heard that earlier today, too. You know, but no, we are not. If we're going to do something like that, we'll put it on our Facebook page.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Sure.
Councilmember Hatley?
Oh, thank you. Just for clarification, when you gave the hours, you said from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, you meant AM, right?
AM, yes, sir.
Okay.
We would do that every day. We would do it every day, or we would also make appointments. We're going to do everything we can to best support our community as we go through this, and also adhere to the order as it's come out.
No, I just want to clarify-
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
For the record.
Tom would really hate to be down here till 11 o'clock every night. The other item that is contained within here is that any items that are handed in or turned in, whether it's plans, applications, submittals, those won't be handled for 48 hours. They will be set, they'll be let, disinfected, and then they'll sit there and allow anything that may be on them to, to die from the disinfectant that's put on there. But we'll try to adhere to our timelines as close to normal as we can. We're still going to continue to utilize our planning staff and those that are behind the scenes from remote locations, and we'll get those to them. And we'll turn these things around just as quickly as we possibly can. We just ask everybody to be patient with us and, and understand, too, this is not anything that anybody in this room has ever done before. So every day, every step forward is a new step. So we'll do the best we can. That being said, moving on from that, council meetings is something that we need to address. Are we going to, and my recommendation is we do not, is that we go to a single council meeting a month. Charter requires you to do that, and we do that until this is over, so that we aren't in these unusual situations that we have going on right now with doors locked, people out front. It's very difficult for the public to participate in this manner, but it's also very important that they participate. So, you know, I would recommend we go down to one, and we only do essential business for the city. I would recommend that we put the items on consent, the council, the, I'm sorry, the agenda, we should come out two weeks prior to the meeting. That way, everyone has a good opportunity to go over the items, have any conversations that are necessary, and clear up anything that needs to be cleared up prior to. It'll give the public an opportunity to thoroughly vet the agenda, and then when we come here, we don't have a prolonged amount of time where we're in a confined space with one another, but we still can conduct the people's business. That would be my recommendation, unless the council has some different guidance on that.
That sounds good to me.
The last thing that I would speak with the council about is our fiscal situation. Right now, we're fiscally strong, but everything's shutting down. The economy's shutting down. You can see it in larger cities, and you can see it's moving this direction. We need to be prepared for a dip in the economy. We're going to see that. We're going to experience it, most likely in June or May, June, July, somewhere in that area, depending on how fast we recover from this. My recommendation, and I'm going to take the action, unless I'm directed to do something different, is I'm going to stop all hiring until July, until the next budget, and we are going to stop all big purchases until, not ones that are already authorized, but any future ones, until July, because we just need to see what happens. In July, we'll reassess. If we're still in this type of a unknown, unusual situation, then we, you know, we may extend past that. But right now, I'd rather be very conservative on this and not even inch toward the edge, you know, until we know where we're at, we know what's going on, we have a better idea of what the duration would be. I think we just need to be very cautious and very conservative.
Are there any comments?
The last issue, if there are, I'm sorry, if there are no comments on that, I'm sorry.
I don't think there is.
The last issue we have to look at is one that is not going to be an easy issue for anybody. I don't enjoy the idea of this. I don't, I'm uncomfortable with the conversation, and not because it's an ugly situation or anything like that, it's just a volatile one. We are in the middle of districting. I do not believe that we are going to meet our deadlines. I know we want to meet our deadlines. We have a strong desire to do that. We've come to this point. However, I'm not really sure how you district to include people and be more inclusive while the process would be excluding them from the meetings of creating the districts. So we're kind of in this weird situation with, that we have going on right now. So, you know, what I'm looking for is direction from the council and what you would like to do on this. I have a feeling, like I said, that we probably could get it done, but I'm not sure that we're going about it in the best manner if we don't include everybody. And I'm not sure that we're going to be able to get the demographer back up here. I believe there's a desire to be there, but I'm not really sure that we're going to get her here. We're certainly not going to get the interaction one-on-one with the public that is desired to help create maps. We're just going to go through a process. So I'm looking for direction from this council.
And, and Bill, let me, let me jump in here for just a minute, because this, this all falls under the declaration of local emergency, and it relates to the meetings that are scheduled going forward, because I want to be clear that, what's going on here. We're still on item number one, declaration of local emergency, and, and what we do moving forward. I will tell you, I have reached out with, I have reached out to the attorney on this item to see if there's something that we can do going forward. I will continue to reach out to him, but, but for right now, what, what Bill's asking for is, is not, is not any motions or any action to take, but what he's looking for is your recommendation as to how he should proceed as the city administrator, under the emergency declaration.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodson?
Um, weighing in is, is cost a factor.
Cost a factor for?
In regards to not being able to meet that deadline, it's my understanding that there would be financial repercussions. It was conditional, so could you please weigh in on that?
I believe that there could potentially be that. I think that, you know, I think we have very solid ground that we're standing on with facing a pandemic. We didn't do that to avoid this. This is something that's came on. We did not do the public health declarations and things like that. All of these things have kind of grown during this process. So, yes, we do face litigation if we take this action. Are we, you know, I don't think there's any attorney that will ever guarantee you anything. I mean, they'll tell you that, you know, what your odds, what they think they can accomplish, and they'll do the best job they can. However, I, I think that in this one, I think our attorneys would have pretty good- However, I, I think that in this one, I think our attorneys would have pretty good defensible ground if the council took that action.
Thank you.
Or if at a later date, we take that action.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, this question's for our attorney, Scott. So what would be the exposure, assuming a normal situation where we did not, in fact, meet the deadline? What would be that fiscal consequence as far as litigation court costs, worst-case scenario for the city?
Well, that, this is really something, I think, getting into the weeds is something I'd rather, you know, do that with the council in closed session. I think it'd be, it would be more appropriate there, but what I would like to do is, is just get your, your temperature on exploring those possibilities. You know, should we explore those possibilities with council for, for the petitioners, or, or should we not? That's really, you know, to get into much more detail, I'd really want to have this as a closed session agenda.
And I, and I appreciate that answer. I just, what we're trying to do is balance the public's participation in this process and then dealing with the emergency that we're facing and then those, all the timelines. So this is not an easy choice, but I think in the interest of.
Councilmember Smith, we're not making that decision today.
I understand.
All we are looking for is, do you want us to explore this?
Right, right.
Because we're going to have to come back at a time, you know, at a later time, because this is potential litigation, that we would talk about this in closed session.
I appreciate that. I'm just saying that I'm open to, all that being said, I'm, I'm open to, yes, absolutely, exploring that and exploring those options in light of the situation we're in. It's not, it's not easy for any of us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson.
Remind me exactly, I believe at this point, we've already had, what, three?
Three of our public hearings, yes, sir.
So where are we at as far as our public meetings goes? There are just one left?
We would need one more public hearing, and then we'd also need a public hearing after the map is adopted to finalize the ordinance.
If, I'm fine with exploring it. That's just the main question. Yes, I'm fine with exploring it. However, in light of that, if we're already, if we're at the beginning phase of this, I'd definitely be much more like, yeah. I mean, but if, since we're kind of at the trail end of that, tail end of this, if there's a way that we can be creative, because it is very important to me, I believe all the counselors on this dais, to have the public weigh in and have the opportunity. But if we're already this far in, I would, I would like to also see which creative ways, not just what's, you know, how can we potentially stop this or, or put it aside, but what are some creative ways I would like to be investigated, what are some creative ways that we can look into moving this forward with the public's comment and their input, so.
I think I have, unless there's another council person, I think I have enough information. We will explore this and bring this back to you in a closed session to receive further direction, to receive direction.
Thank you.
That being said, Mr. Mayor, I think I have enough of the temperature of the council to know how to take the city forward as we enter further into this pandemic.
Could you wish to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
What I hear you saying is that we would have an impromptu special closed session meeting ASAP.
We will have it, you know, we have a meeting scheduled for the 31st, so probably what we'll do is we'll do something similar to this type of meeting. We'll have our phone situation settled a little bit better, I hope, at that point, and then we will, you know, whether the council members are physically present or we bring them in via Skype, you know, we'll include the whole body on a closed session to discuss the item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number two, Fix Solutions. Potential housing for 500, 800, 1,000, or 1,542 homeless persons.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor and council. The reason why this is in front of you today at this special meeting is because the original email that came in implied that there was some connection between the current health situation that is going on, the current health crisis is what it says, and this item. This is a request from a company called Fix Solutions. It says it's immediate housing solutions. They are working with an unknown person at this point, apparently themselves, on this project. The information that we've received, interestingly enough, over the course of the last couple days, is that Elijah House, who previously had presented an idea for the labor camp or the man camp or recovery camp, whichever it's called, that resides at 4801 Feather River Boulevard, had, and also they were working with the property owner, Highway 70 Industrial Park, who is owned by Mr. Sidenglance. Interestingly enough, today I received a letter from Elijah House. They're not involved in this project with Fix Solutions. They are, don't know how this got to where it's at with Fix Solutions, but they're not involved within it. Late today, I also received an email from the property owner. The property owner, and I'll read the email to you, says, "Bill, thank you for the information. This company slash people do not represent Highway 70 Industrial Park, and we do not know who they are." So at this point, what we're dealing with is a hypothetical situation that has been, or question that has been put out there for a property that is located in the county. What the idea is, as that was presented, was that they would like to put in some sort of a homeless camp for individuals that may be suffering the effects of the coronavirus and other health conditions. The homeless encampment would be anywhere from 5, 800, 1,000, or up to 1,542 beds on that particular location. Now, this body does not control or have jurisdictional boundary there. This property is, however, within 200 yards of your south city border. So what we're looking for today on this, based upon the information that you've been previously provided, and the information that we have, that I've received, which I will hand out to you here in a moment, we need to know how to respond to this. They're asking for how we feel about this. Well, staff's feelings are never the policy of the council. I do not set your policy. I ask you for policy, I implement your policy. Now, there has been times when I say something, when I'm talking to somebody, this would be a good one, where I say, hey, that sounds like a good idea. I would please ask everybody to never misconstrue me saying something as, hey, that sounds like a good idea, as that is the city policy or the council's policy. I don't have that luxury or that authority. I work for you. So I just want to be really clear on that, because there is some confusion. Others were using, you know, a casual conversation to benefit their agenda. So I just want to be really clear with that and apologize to the council. I am not setting your policy by saying that I think something is a good idea. That being said, we are looking to you to know what are your feelings about this project? How would you like us to address this project? How would you like us to respond to Fix Solutions? I would like to know what your policy is on this and what your feelings are, so that we can carry that out and implement those policies.
Councilmember Goodson wishes to speak. Are you finished, Bill?
Yes, sir.
So I was a little surprised, too, in regards to the initial correspondence from Fix Solutions, and then when we just had a recent letter from Elijah House. And the end of that letter, and it is addressed by Joe Henderson, the CEO of the Elijah House. And the, the synopsis is that the purpose of the letter is to separate our agency and our plans from the stigma that Fix Solutions has brought to the project and to my agency. The Elijah House, he wants us to know that he had nothing to do with this, and it is not his style of doing business. So with that being said, it's, I know that the council, that staff is seeking direction, but if the material, if the information that has been disseminated to us is inaccurate, and these are entities that are not partnering with each other, then there is a concern. So I, I think until we have accuracy and transparency, that it, it needs to be, we need to pump the brakes on that.
Jackie, how do I get in the queue from here?
You're streaming as soon as you start speaking, so.
Councilmember Draper, you're welcome to speak.
Okay. I'm concerned that these individuals sending the information are being dishonest. It's, it's obvious that they're not representing who they say they are. And so to me, that, we can't make any recommendations on this, because it's totally inaccurate, all the information that they sent, really.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson.
Well, the, the need for housing for our homeless is a valid need and concern. I spoke with somebody with the rescue mission today, and just letting me know the situation of how many are there and how tight they are packed in there, it does just, you know, just give a blaring sound of there is a, there is a valid need. However, this entity being, number one, an unknown entity, they don't live in our community. Not only that, they're an outsider. We have a lot of amazing agencies within our community who live here, who understand our community, who understand the needs, and also have to bear with whatever choices that we make together as a community, as opposed to some other outside entity coming in and trying to push something on us. So I have no trust or understanding, I mean, our initial, just this, how it was even presented, just being, number one, unclear and also deceptive, is a definitely a, for me, a red flag of not even wanting to do any kind of business. You know, your first impressions are very important, and so with Fix Solutions coming in with a deceptive way of doing business, for me, it's like, gosh, I don't want to hear anything more from this person. Number two, I like to work with our current, if we're going to do anything, work with those that are already in our community, understand the need, understand our community, to take care of those who are vulnerable among us.
Councilmember Smith.
Echo of support to the words that have already been spoke by the other councilmembers. I would be in complete agreement that if assistance is going to be rendered to our community as it relates to the homeless population and the COVID-19 concern, that those dollars or help are directed towards agencies we already have in place. They work with that population on a regular basis. There is a relationship that's established there, and they would be the most qualified, I think, to be able to administer help and assistance. And so, and for me, the red flag is the number that Fix Solutions is presenting here, 1,542. And that, that number is a countywide number. So this is a game changer, because we're, it sounds like they're proposing, if they're legit, to basically make that property a facility to house or to address COVID, this, this health crisis on a countywide level, which is, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big deal. That's a game changer for our community. And just thinking about all the conversation about transporting, moving people that are sick around, I mean, I just have a lot of concerns all the way around with this, so.
It's a long minute.
Yeah, that's just, this is, and it's just hard to digest this, I mean, because of the, just what the proposal here is. So it's very, very concerning, and I'm very apprehensive. But if the Sacramento was proposing to provide assistance to our, our community agencies that we all know and respect and appreciate, to come alongside them and to assist them, to provide funding, that's great. But this, this is a complete unknown, and I'm very concerned.
I'll, I'll address both issues that were, that were proposed, first being the homeless. They, they wanted to make it into a homeless camp, 1,542 beds. We, our actual homeless population, consider on the street homeless people who are willing to accept help, is a very small number proportionately to that. So that means that we would, or they would, be recruiting homeless to this area, and it would be a very good dump-off location for Los Angeles or Sacramento, any of these bigger cities that are simply trying to clean up their community. And I think with us trying to provide services to our own community, that anything of this magnitude would just be a ridiculous consideration. And then when the coronavirus hit, they switched over to the coronavirus, that this could be a sanctuary for coronavirus victims. Well, as I said earlier in this meeting, Butte County has zero cases and zero suspected cases. Why in the world would we bring infected people into an area where there is no infection? It just doesn't make any sense to contaminate a, an area who has no virus, no sickness as of yet, because you're not just going to have people laying in beds convalescing, you're going to have workers and everyone else that'll be in and out of that facility on a regular basis. They'll be stopping at the store, they'll be stopping to get gas, they'll be, who knows? If they live here, they'll, their kids will be playing with other kids, just all sorts of doors open up for this community to be infected by that. So, so it would be an absolute no for me on either proposal. Councilmember Hatley wishes to speak.
Thank you. Well, I have not only the concerns with the mayor and everyone else has said, I have those concerns also. The thing that, that strikes me is, is I back up from people who start dropping names or using somebody else, like this company saying, you know, they're trying to act like they're representing Elijah House and that. And as far as I can see from the, from the memo that you sent out to us, or the correspondence, these people haven't even talked to the landowner. So to me, that, that gives me pause. I, I have to step back and look at somebody who's willing to do that. I don't want to deal, I don't want to do business with you, and I personally won't do business with you, and you'll never get my vote to do anything with these folks, to be honest with you, because I think this is, is just some, and, and I have to agree with the mayor. This is nothing more than, they're just trying to find a place to, to make money, because they're going to make money. They're not going to do it for free. So they're going to make money, and they want to dump their problems that we don't have as of yet, right in the middle of our laps. And I won't, I personally, my vote will never have that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have several emails that were received regarding these comments. I would like to read these comments to the council, then we will attach these to the minutes, so that anybody that wishes to see them can see them. So if the council is good with that, I'll begin reading those. The first one we received from Elaine Shamir, I believe is the pronunciation, S-H-A-M-I-R. "The Orville site is a big open space with security 24/7, and helping the homeless is very important at a time when there is a deadly virus that can spread quickly through the homeless community. We will make sure the population feels safe, and we will treat the homeless with dignity." There's a question. "Is there a plan to take care of the homeless population to help prevent the spread of coronavirus? We just heard the governor allocated 150 million to help the homeless and stop the spread of the virus." It goes on. "Security is very important. We will screen every individual before taking them in. Women and men's facilities are separated. There are cameras and security personnel on site 24/7. There are rec rooms and outdoor facilities to workout, also a dog park." Followed by another question. "Would a facility like this be helpful to your plans and health as a city?" The second email is received from a Jeffrey Pink. "Collaborative slash work with local groups. We would like to work with local groups on medical screening and caring for the homeless. We think that it is very important and that they are treated with dignity and get the proper care, so that they can eventually, 40-50%, be able to get a." and get the proper care so that they can eventually, 40-50%, be able to get a job and take care of themselves." Question. "We were told by Odin that there is another local group working with them to help the homeless situation in Orville. Is it a possibility that they can partner with us?" Funding. "We have initial private funding secured. Through our and other nonprofits, Section 8 vouchers, VASH vouchers, SSI, and Medicaid, we will be able to raise funds to bring the costs to the state down 20% to 25%. Through my experience, we'll get food donations from many grocery stores and humanitarian groups." Question. "Have you talked with the governor's office/the state about getting needed funding to help provide housing and services for the homeless citizens? Jeff Pink, Fix Solutions, and a phone number." The third email, it is from a Rod Russell. Question. "If coronavirus, and I'm assuming, making the assumption CV is coronavirus, if coronavirus infected the homeless population, how equipped would the hospital and other shelters be to handle the influx of patients? Rod Russell, CEO, Soul Nest LLC." Another email from a Stan Barata. Question. It says question, and then below it it says solution. "We are a passionate and experienced group with a proven track record. We have created comprehensive solutions with wraparound services that include medical, mental health, job training, and other needed services to help our homeless citizens. We have created plans for a number of different population sizes. Our team members have experience at this location and have run facilities of this size and larger. I was executive vice president for five years of the Wine Guard Center, 700 people. Each person has their own room, the largest homeless shelter in Los Angeles, largest in the western United States. We care about the homeless and want to do what we can to help them get out of a bad situation. We would really like to work with Orville and Butte County to create a premier site for the unhoused citizens." Question. "Is the homeless population in Orville/Bute County approximately 1,000? And what percentage are veterans? Thank you, Stan Barata." And the final one I have is from Sheila Surrell, I believe is how it's pronounced, but it's not, I apologize. "Jobs. Opening the facility will create jobs in Orville/Bute County and we will have a job training program within the facility. There were already over 60 people employed at the site and our plan would employ a substantial number of people again. Is this something the city would be supportive of?" That's the end of the written ones that I have. I'm not sure if anybody is on the phone wishing to make comment.
Is there anyone on the phone, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we can check with them.
Do we have any public speakers on item number two?
Mr. Mayor, you want to step in?
What was that?
We would like to let the speakers know that you have two minutes to speak on the item.
Yeah, this is Jeff Pink. I just want to clarify something. Yeah, I just want to clarify something.
Go ahead.
We did not say that we're associated with Elijah House. I don't know who put that in there, but we never, we called Elijah House quite a few times over the last week and a half, never returned, got a return phone call. But we never put that letter in there. I'm not sure whoever posted that information added that Elijah House letter in there, but that was the first time we saw it, was when that letter was posted on the site. That was it. So we, I'm not sure, we're not dishonest. As a matter of fact, we're very honorable people. We just want to help the homeless out and that's the reason we're up there. We knew, I've known about the site for about eight months now. I've been up there a few times. And I'm really sorry if you think we're a dishonest company. We've got a lot of experience helping the homeless and we, that's why we sent a letter up to Dawn to discuss that with her.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, that seems to be the rest of the speakers on the phone. I believe our city administrators outside, seeing if there's anyone that is wanting to speak from outside.
I'm sure that we all heard the same thing in these emails. There's a whole lot of "we's." And it seems to me that this is a consorted effort to push this thing through. I would go a step further with not being on board with this.
Mr. Mayor, do you have speakers?
Yes, sir. As soon as I'm done commenting. I would be on board with not only being against this magnitude of a project like this in our community, but I would also move for the dismantlement of that facility so this is no longer attempted. We just heard a gentleman speak and say that he's been up here several times, trying to plan this situation for eight months. I'm not happy about that. When we were told that these trailers were coming in, that they were going to house workers for 18 to 24 months. And I believe that this council commented at the time that we were afraid that it was going to turn into something completely different. I think that FEMA needs to collect their trailers and move on to the next area that needs the next disaster before we create one here.
City Administrator, you have speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I have one. Good afternoon, Orville City Council, the cameraman of cameraman investigations. In regards to the homeless having emergency housing during this time of the coronavirus, I have questions about supply concerns. I've been to the stores in town. Just yesterday, I was out to get some flour and some water. Only one store in town had water and that was the Smart &amp; Final. And that's because they were limiting two per person, which I think is fair for a 35-bottle water case. Bread, bread, there's practically no bread, no soap, pretty much no basic supplies, no veg, cooking oil, vegetable oil, flour, everything's gone. So if we are going to house these people, how are they going to eat and be able to bathe and have supplies to actually run a shelter if there's no supplies to be donated or bought? And just on a side note, Mr. O'Reilly does, is protected under the First Amendment for freedom of the press. So could you please let him in? Thank you.
Mr. O'Reilly?
Good afternoon, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Just to touch on this subject very briefly, I appreciate all the comments that have been made. I appreciate the sanitized microphone that I got just now, provided by the city administrator. Anyhow, not only Fix Solutions and the whole situation surrounding this, as Mr. Mayor stated, we heard the gentleman speak and say that they have been up here, kind of suggesting that they are from down there, wherever there may be, that they've been looking at this site for quite some time. I have received hundreds of correspondence from members of the community and I promised them that I would be here to comment the best I could, if available. And the consensus of the general public is, we don't want anything of this nature here. The old saying, you build it, they will come. We don't have enough homeless population here that are willing to get the help, as was stated by Mr. Mayor earlier, that are willing to get the help to go into this facility. They are going to bring outside individuals in here. And we, Orville does not need this, not by Fix Solutions, not by anybody in our city. Thank you.
And Mayor, can I clarify that this is in the unincorporated area? And if they were to do it, it would take a use permit in public hearings. No permit has been applied for it.
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers?
Yes. Hi, my name is Mary Sanchez. I am an RN at Orville Hospital. I am not coming speaking for my hospital, but we're working really hard over there to make everything as safe and protected for people to come in there. A lot of people's kids are at home and they're having to come to work anyway. We're really putting ourselves out there and we're expecting, you know, some pretty serious challenges in the upcoming weeks. And I, this is, I was just watching you guys on a live feed and I want you to look to the left of you, please, and look to the right of you. And I want to ask yourselves, are you six feet apart? I really want you guys to be good examples. We can all see you all over town. And I know that sounds silly, but we are doing this at work. And if you could do that for us, too. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
That is the last speaker we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith wishes to speak.
Yeah, just in kind of digesting, a lot of these letters came at us pretty quick, just real recent. And as it goes to the gentleman from Fix, part of the way that this got rolled in together with Elijah House is a letter that was sent to Dawn, to the city here. And it states that we're exploring, the last sentence here, paragraph, "We're exploring, working with local groups to provide the most comprehensive and best solutions possible." And so there is implied that they've been working with or exploring working with. And going back to the comment of that they've been coming up here for many, many months and yet nobody locally knows, you know, this organization at all. So, which goes back to the whole, you know, concept, and I, the comment that the mayor has made, you know, converting that particular project into something that it was never designed. And, you know, thinking in terms of, you know, SEQA, all of the layers of process that need to go into having a property become something other than its original intended use, is rather arduous and it's lengthy and there's reasons for that. It protects the public. It ensures, you know, that all the considerations to our planning impacts the hospital, food facilities, on and on and on. The list is lengthy. And so essentially, it almost looks like, and I'm just going to call it, and I think the mayor's been pretty blunt at this point, like a power grab from Sacramento, to come here and to, you know, leverage this property because it's been set up and designed to house a large amount of people and almost like guilting us into just accepting this in light of the current crisis. And I just, that in and of itself just feels a little icky to me, to use a simple word. And that just causes me to stop and pause and go, wait a minute, what's going on here? What are we doing? And again, just thinking in terms of some of the things that have rolled out of Sacramento as of late, looking for different properties and places to house the homeless, it almost looks like they're wanting to make Orville a regional landing place for the homeless population, maybe even looking for solutions for downtown Sacramento, downtown San Francisco. And quite frankly, and I think it's already been commented too, that this dais, we've been concerned, or at least I've been concerned, I know some of the others have expressed concern about that possibility. That would be a game changer for our community. That would completely change the look and feel of our community and some of the hopes and desires that we have for our town. I think many that live here want to have a safe, clean, wonderful town. And that we take care of our own, we take care of our homeless, and we take care of those in need in an appropriate way through the various agencies that we have. And we look for funding to bolster those services. But this is a complete, out of the blue game changer. And even to suggest, in going to the governor's emergency proclamation, to suggest that we're going to just step in here and sidestep all of these processes and force upon your community these services, I find offensive. And I think it's just blatantly wrong. And that I know that I will do what I can to stand against that. And I think it's offensive even to those organizations that service with great compassion and diligence our homeless community and the disadvantage in our town. And I just don't see anything right about this. And even the way these letters have been crafted are guilt trips at best. And I just find them offensive.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson?
I just want to echo the sentiments of the mayor and regarding the current, what used to be called the man camp there, Highway 7, the industrial park. I'm not sure, I know at one point we're going to have potentially future agenda items. I would like for a future agenda item for a letter to be written from this dais to FEMA to remove the trailers. Because I share the same sentiments. I don't, you know, it's no today and I would like to remove the possibility of it being even a no tomorrow. So just to remove even that option for Sacramento.
Are there any more comments from the dais? Having none, I think that it's a...
What I'm, the direction that I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, is that we should formulate a letter to get out to Fix Solutions regarding the concerns that I've heard today. Also, I would ask that we utilize the services of Colan Huber and their legal expertise to also outline the legal objections that we are going to raise in the event that this project is to move forward, such as SEQA and whatever those may be. So we will work together with a letter and get that prepared and get that out to this company to let them know how we, as a community, the city of Orville, feel about having this right next door to us, essentially on our city boundary.
And not only this company, but anyone that is wishing to move forward with this type of establishment for that property, I would have to say that we're not interested. So we will determine, you can determine who these interested parties are and draft letters to each of them.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to be back here in three weeks or a month and doing the same thing.
Yes, sir. So I think that's the direction that I'm hearing. If that's correct, then that's what we'll do.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, that adjourns our meeting till March 31st, 2020 at 3:00 PM.